Welcome, everybody. We're beginning going momentarily. Welcome to the September 24, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Common Council. It is now 7:00 PM. And I have a list here to call upon. Anybody who wishes to speak after that can, and we have some online callers tonight. It's now 7:03. And ask that you state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to share what you want to say with the public. First name I have is Mr. Frank Chase.
Frank Chase, 24 Roxbury Road. More debunked talking points. Stuart and Sevedra did not walk the Allen Street neighborhoods with Sharon and I. Attached is Mayor Stuart's letter to state bonding commission members Napoli and Piscopo recapping their visit to Allen Street with Leader McNamara, Sevedra, and others. As you will read in Stuart's letter, no amount of money was noted by Napoli and Piscopo during their visit, and certainly there was no indication that the state would cover the entire Allen Street project shortfall. The Allen Street project remains a city funding issue $6 million short, which has been neglected and mismanaged for 30 years, including 12 years on Stuart's watch. Our due diligence since 2023 has uncovered the facts. Stuart took office in 2013 with a nearly complete cardinal engineering plan from Mayor O'Brien with a price tag of nearly $7 million. Stuart chose to ignore O'Brien's plan. The 2025 updated cardinal engineering plan for Allen Street is now nearly $15 million. Now Stuart claims she has a $25 million unassigned balance in the general fund. After 12 years, here's another opportunity for Stuart to finally correct the Allen Street infrastructure problem. Council leaders McNamara, Santiago, Sanchez noted regarding Stuart's recent $6 million proposal. We welcome the availability of unaudited fund balances from the last fiscal year to allocate funds for the Board of Education, tax stabilization, and needed capital improvements. The city should use these general fund dollars to meet more urgent priorities other than the addition of more pickleball courts. Democratic leaders said alternatives should be considered for using the $470,000 that meet compelling needs in the community to prevent evictions, reduce food insecurity, and improve streets and infrastructure in our neighborhoods. APX consultants wrote Inflow and Infiltration 101. This is similar to the Allen Street problem. Inflow and infiltration refers to entry of groundwater and storm water into sanitary sewer systems. INI strains wastewater systems by increasing the flow levels. In many cases, INI accounts for 50% of the annual flow to treatment plants. It is estimated that INI costs U.S. cities around $100 billion annually. Simply put, a single leak can cost upwards of $10,000 in increased operational and treatment costs. Beyond the fiscal burden, communities may face property damage, environmental degradation, and public health concerns when storm sewer systems are pushed beyond their limits. In 2023, Weston Simpson engineers declared the Allen Street project must be a priority because the infrastructure is at crisis levels. To date, Stuart has refused to prioritize, fully fund, and construct the Allen Street project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Our next speaker is Mike Thompson.
Hello, everybody here. Michael Thompson, 39th Pendleton Road, New Britain, Connecticut. I'm here to speak on a conversation on Facebook that I had with Alderman Simpson. Alderman Simpson's dehumanizing rhetoric. In the wake of the tragic assassination of the conservative activist Charlie Kirk on a Utah college campus early this month, an act of senseless political violence has shocked the nation and heightened fears of escalating division. Many of us in New Britain hoped our elected leaders would rise above the fray. We yearn for words of unity, condemnation of violence, and commitment to civil discourse. Instead, one of our own, Alderman Nate Simpson, chose a path of bile and dehumanizing not just the victim but anyone who dares to disagree with his worldview. As reported in Simpson's own Facebook post following Kirk's death, Alderman wrote, "Charles Kirk died as he lived. His work supported right-wing political violence. He gave no empathy," on and on. "This is mere criticism. It is a chilling attempt to justify the tragedy by painting the victim as deserving of his fate." Kirk, whoever one's view on his political aspirations and his lifestyle, was a husband, a father, and a political figure gunned down in cold blood. A life ended violently on September 10, 2025. Amidst speaking engagements, Simpson's words echoed dangerous rhetoric that fuels the very violence that decries elsewhere, reducing a human being to a character of evil. As a constituent, I couldn't stay silent. I reached out to Alderman Simpson directly via Facebook urging him to tone down his inflammatory language. In a community like New Britain where we've worked hard to bridge divides on issues of race, economy, and justice, such posts from a sitting politician erode trust and stoke unnecessary hatred. His response? He doubled down, retorting that if it walks like a duck and talks like a duck, then it is every right to call somebody a Nazi or fascist. This isn't leadership. It's a license for dehumanizing an individual by equating ideological opponents with the architects of genocide. Simpson didn't just insult, he incites. In a time when political violence is tearing America's fabric, from the recent shooting of Kirk to broader trends of extremism, our Alderman is pouring gasoline on the fire. New Britain residents deserve better. We elect officials to represent with dignity, not amplify the echo chambers of the social media outrage. Simpson's history as an organizer for radical and social and economic justice is commendable in intent, but when it veers into personal attacks that blur lines between debate and dehumanization, I just ask this to be stopped. This got to start somewhere in New Britain. Why not here? Stop the political violence. We're all people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next speaker is John Christopoe.
Thank you. John Christopoe, 292 Lynnwood Street. The song "See You in September" by The Happenings. And no, you didn't lose me to a summer love. So my recent water bill, Clean Water Fund, $4.50 increase, 24%, no notice. This is what I read. "New Britain is applying for funding from the Connecticut Clean Water Fund to help pay for the New Britain Flush Program, which aims to repair and replace the city's aging sewer and storm drain infrastructure. Water Department does not directly collect money for the Connecticut Clean Water Fund. Instead, it receives financial assistance from the fund for its wastewater projects." I did some back-of-the-envelope calculations. Over the last three years that we've been paying for this, $13 million has gone into this fund. Sounds like it would have fixed some bigger problems. A little while ago, I asked if our chief operations officer and our assistant corporation counsel was getting paid for both jobs. I'm not questioning her ability to do both jobs. I'm questioning whether she is being paid for both. During the summer, new tenants moved into our neighborhood down the street. It is a quiet neighborhood, and they thought they were going to be the neighborhood. Working on their jacked-up cars in the street, parking facing the wrong way, congregating dirt bikes and four-wheelers, doing stunts and reckless operating, constant yelling, drinking, trying to intimidate us neighbors. The only information available about who owns the property was a name. No phone number, no email. New Britain should have this information. We should be able to find it. With a unique name, I was able to find a phone number and email address. Absentee landlord, Brooklyn, New York. I got no response from him. My only alternative was Chief Marino and his department, who responded multiple times to our calls. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Christopoe. Next speaker is Roy Centeno.
Good evening. Roy Centeno, 289 Slater Road. Thank you, council, for your service. As always, I appreciate your time spent with us here. As far as the Resolution Number 11, I have nothing against pickleball. I've never played it. I've watched it a couple. It doesn't attract me. But the $400,000 proposed for it, I think it should be going to something other than other pressing projects. So I'm in a disagreement with the $400,000 going to pickleball. I think the education, the Board of Ed could use some money. The Parks and Rec could use some money. So I think that pickleball, I think it's a fad. I don't think it's going to last. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Roy. Our next speaker is Paul Cantzerro.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Paul Cantzerro, 250 Hillhurst Avenue. I speak about something that's going to probably upset some people and not others. I'm here to speak in favor of Justin Dorsey. Even though mostly you've probably already made up your mind, I just want to speak about a couple things. I've known Justin and his family for many, many years. In all my years in politics and on that council, he's always, always treated me with respect and fairness, never any partisanship. I'm sure the discussion about experience and knowledge is going to come up, because I've heard that already. I've got 12 years as a chief of staff in the mayor's office, filling in as department head when our dear friend Kenny passed away, and working very closely in that position with every department, including planning and development. Knowing the charter, knowing the ordinances, knowing all our variances plays a part. And I'm sure the discussion about his loyalty, the loyalty with him and the mayor. And the mayor wants to take care of him. Hello? We're in politics. That's what you do. It's what leaders do. They take care of their own. That's on both sides of the aisle. On both sides of the aisle. There's one thing that's going to, I think, separate Justin. I've seen many department heads in my years come and go with many credentials. And they're here eight to four. And they drive to the suburbs or down the shore, and that's the end. We see them in this city. I've said this more than once. There's something about, and no disrespect to anybody that hasn't born here. When you're born and raised here, it's a different thing. You have New Britain here. Always, always. There's no doubt in my mind that Justin will be loyal to whoever's in that mayor's office, whether it's Sharon or whether it's Bobby. No doubt in my mind. Because they're going to do what the mayor's wants for the city, what their proposal in the economic development for the city. We all just want to make a place better to work, live, and play. He's born and raised, been here, stayed here. Family's been here for years. He has New Britain in his heart, and I think it'd be a good choice. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Paul. The next speaker is Kristi DeLaGuilla.
Good evening. My name is Kristi DeLaGuilla, 414 Alexander, frequent park user. I totally agree with using the pickleball money for something much better, but I understand that redirecting it entirely at this point may be unrealistic due to how local government works. But I'd like to raise a concern. The money allocated along with the grant and trust fund money, along with the money proposed, could fully fund a new court at AW. If we must spend this on fund for a specific park, I urge decision makers to use transparency and give the whole community a voice in what improvements we want to see before another $800,000 combined pickleball court is finalized, or at least explain which grants and trusts can be used where. With community input, the park systems could host other great ideas. One of my favorites was a roller skating rink that changes into an ice skating rink like they have in Hartford, which would draw visitors to New Britain and help the equity gap on children's exposure to skating activities in the city. I urge at minimum just simply changing the language from pickleball courts to park improvement, however you want to word it, just change that, until the public can input their ideas and get a better understanding of which grants and trusts can be used where. Second, I'd like to call again on our municipal and state leaders to take a look at legislation preventing masked law enforcement for nonviolent crimes. These people could be anyone without proper identification, and nobody can feel safe while this is happening. The city should be following other districts and publicly educate residents about their rights as silence is compliance. To sum it up, I'm asking for the $400,000 plus to be renamed and openly discussed to everybody, and for leaders to take a stance and speak up about what we can do to keep our residents safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. I believe we have online college tonight, and can I have the last four digits? Caller 7069, you have three minutes. State your name and address. Caller 7069. We have another caller? Hello, caller 1092, last four digits. The floor is yours. State your name and address. You have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lou Garcia. I live at 10 Jackson Street, New Britain, Connecticut. I was wanting to speak on two different resolutions that I have in front of me. The first one, it is talking about the 2024-2025 budget transfer and alignment from the general fund. Obviously, a lot of these funds are essential items. The one I don't agree with, it is $470,000 towards the pickleball court. As much as I love our parks, and I know that pickleball is starting to, a lot of people are starting to like it. Unfortunately, we have priorities, right? So we do have, I understand, we're $6 million short from the Allen Street project, but anything helps, right? So if we can at least get some of this money to support the project, I think that would be a great idea. Also, I wanted to speak on the appointment for the director of planning and development. So on this one, based off what I've learned, correct me if I'm wrong. I was told there were different applicants, different, I'm sorry, numerous candidates, other more qualified experience and have a degree. Again, I just hope that we are giving all of our applicants a fair process and right, and not just changing people that the mayor is friends with. Because that is not what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to qualify people as directors. One thing I do agree is that Justin is from New Britain. So that is good. However, I just hope that he was the best candidate. If not, then that's something we should be looking at, is qualification and not just who she knows. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Is there another caller? Caller 3925, the floor is yours. What is it? Sorry. Caller 3935. State your name and address. The floor is yours.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Nico Stevens. Lou for short. I live on 126000 Street in Brandon. I'm here to speak on two topics. One is the Allen Street project. I'm one of the residents who, when there is rainstorm and there is flood, my property, my basement, get flooded. And I've just been with the neighborhood for a couple three years. And my understanding is I've been going back for many, many years. And I just want to come and urge our lawmakers to please make our neighborhood a priority. Our property matters. My house matters. And I disagree with the funding going toward pickleball. We don't need pickleball. That money that we have can go towards reducing the $6 million short of the Allen Street project. My property matters. Because I need the foundation of my property. So I'm urging elected lawmakers, whoever makes a decision, to please make Allen Street a priority. I understand I've been going back years, and I quite have been going back years. So I need you guys to please remember that we are individuals. We have families. And we pay our taxes. And we need our property, our home, our family to matter to you. And the second one is about the appointment of Justin. Going off what the other person said, I believe that, yes, he is from New Britain, which is awesome. But there are other applicants that, it may be applicants that are from New Britain, that was born in New Britain, that are more qualified or have more qualifications. It's a fair getting process. That's all we want. Not because I know somebody that I get the position. That's not how it's supposed to work. Because I know a lawmaker, I know the mayor, I know this person, I get the job. It's because I'm qualified for the job. So fair getting process to be given to every single person that applies for the position.
Thank you for calling in. Any other callers? No other callers? Okay. Anybody else wish to speak? Anybody else? Third time, anybody else? Seeing none. Public participation is ending at 7:27. Do any of the other persons wish to speak briefly? Alderman Smidley.
Thank you, sir. I just want to address the comments from the two callers related to the appointment of the position in an open competitive examination process. That is exactly what happened. Members from both sides of this common council sat on the interview panel, in addition to professionals from the planning and development department, who are professionals in what they do. So that is the first stage of filtering before it even reaches the mayor's office for a recommendation or a further interview. There were three candidates, as I understood, two from New Britain, one from outside of New Britain. And they all went through the same open competitive position. So it wasn't just a, here's my friend, and here's a position for you. That's how the city operates in all departments. Fire Department, Police Department, the school district, the water department. There's an open competitive civil examination for almost every single job. I had to take one in the school district, even when I was promoted to the position that I have as a manager in our facilities department. So I just want to calm everybody and reassure everybody that there was a fair, open, competitive process with a first filter before the mayor's office was even involved in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? Any other? Alderman Scott had her hand up first. Preempt, Ms. Scott? Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Frank. Oh, he left. Thank you, Frank. But I know he's going to watch at home, so thank you, Frank, for sharing the 30-year problems that we've had with the flooding, as always. And we do need to prioritize our spending, and I hope that that will happen here tonight, that we will be prioritizing the spending. Thank you, Mike, for coming. I just want to say peace and love before I even talk about this. Thank you, Mike, for coming. Listen, nobody deserves to be killed. Nobody deserves to be assassinated. But I think that we need to be clear about the message that this person gave while he was here. Not saying that he deserves to die, but clearly statements that are personal to me, saying I didn't even know who he was until after he was assassinated, that basically, my ancestors and I deserve to be slaves still. The Civil Rights was a joke. So I think that we need to be clear about who he was. My heart goes out deeply to his children. It goes out deeply to any child who has to witness their parent being murdered or any kind of trauma that they might be endured to. But I think that when we're talking about this, I'm not sure if it's really politically, it's a racist statement. This was a racist, hurtful, harmful person. And, but no one deserves to die. But I think we need to be clear about what his message was. Because I don't condone any hate towards anybody, any human being. And I don't condone any harm towards any human being either, even him, even though he made statements. Even though he made statements that he made, I still have it in my heart to empathize with his murder. So, John, thank you for coming out. I appreciate you coming and sharing your concerns. If you need anything, I think you were saying you were having a hard time finding someone to talk to. You can always give me a call, 860-325-3119. Roy, thanks for coming and sharing your suggestions. And yes, we need to be prioritizing our funding. And Paul, thanks for sharing your opinion on the appointment. And thank you for your suggestions on the spending, the person after that, I didn't get your name. But thank you for your suggestions on the spending, and I agree with you with the safety concerns that you have 100%. Everybody needs to feel safe. No one deserves to feel like they can't walk down the street and be safe here. Louz, thanks for calling in. The parks are wonderful, and they're great, but if our kids don't have food to eat, we don't have houses to live in, what could our parks and pickleball? You know, how can I enjoy a game of pickleball if my house is flooding, or if I am unhomed? I can't enjoy those things. So, we have to prioritize. And thanks for also talking about your feedback with the appointment. And the caller after Louz, thanks for talking about the flooding as well. You matter. Your house matters, and I want you to know that you matter, to me anyways. And the feedback that you gave on the position, I share your concerns. So, thank you, everybody, and I hope everybody can find in their heart to have a lot of peace and love and empathy for every human being that lives here. And we won't condone any hateful statements here. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Scott. Alderwoman Sardara.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Where to begin? All right, first on the appointment for Justin Dorsey. Myself and the chairman both served on the interview panel, along with the outgoing Planning and Development Director and the person who had the job before him. So, there were two professionals and two politicians in the process. In the end, it was a statistical tie between the two of the three people who made it to the next step in the process. So, you could be assured that the person's name that's coming before you today was vetted, was interviewed, was credentialed, and is more than qualified for the position. Whether or not he is friends with the mayor is irrelevant, and you can't promote somebody for being a friend with the mayor, and you cannot deny them a position for being a friend with the mayor. Let's keep that in mind. I want to get back to the question that John has raised two meetings in a row about the position of COO and Corp Counsel. She did wear two hats and gets one paycheck. No, so firmly, I thought I said it the last meeting, but I want to say it once again. No, she does not pull a double salary. She is drawing down on her corp salary, her Corp Counsel salary, while she is wearing two hats. Alderwoman Scott, I found some of what you said contradictory, because you condemned the words of Charlie Kirk while you offered peace and love in your heart to everybody, no matter who they are. You either support free speech, or you don't. Either you can say, I support free speech, but I can't stand what that person said, but I believe the person had the right to say it because it's free speech. Because I'm going to tell you, for all the people who condemn what Charlie Kirk has to say, his supporters think equally of, say, an AOC-type personality, or the guy who just won, I can't remember his name, the primary in New York City. Free speech is free speech means it's free to everybody, whether we like what they have to say, or we find what they have to say absolutely appalling. Once we start parsing out who is entitled to that free speech and who isn't, we lose the value of free speech. And I'm sure you all can appreciate that with, I'll use Jimmy Kimmel as an example, right? Cancel culture, cut that crap out, okay? Either we're for our Constitution and we agree, and everybody's free speech, or nobody. An injustice for one is an injustice for all. So, we need to stand for everyone's right to free speech. You could get up and say, I absolutely disagree, or I'm appalled with what that person said, but in no way does what anybody says deserves them to be assassinated. And when you correlate their speech with what happened to them, you're wrong. Because I, let's take a walk back and look at Martin Luther King. Why was Martin Luther King assassinated? Because a group of people hated what he had to say. So, if you were a supporter of Martin Luther King's, you think that was horrible, that he was exercising his freedom of speech. Whether you like Charlie Kirk or not, he was doing the exact same thing. He was exercising his right to freedom of speech, no matter how appalling some people find what he had to say. So, that's what I want to say on free speech, because I think people are mixing it up. It can only be free speech if we like what they have to say, or you have the right to say it, but, oh, well, you might get shot for it. No. Either we celebrate free speech, or we don't. And about Allen Street, I'm going to say it every single time it comes up, $6 million has been set aside for Allen Street. I never said Mayor Stewart took the walk. I said representatives from her office, as well as myself, and Smedley and the state delegation, we all took the walk. And Frank is mistaken that the bonding chairs did not actually talk about money. Yes, they did, and they said to us, if the city of New Britain can come up with 1/3 of the project cost, it will go a long way to get the State Bonding Commission to approve the rest of the money, quote, unquote. I was there. I like to make sure, I don't believe you were there at that particular time, Alderwoman Scott, but that is exactly the conversation that took place. I also want to say, as a person who's walking around the city, knocking on doors and talking to people, Ward 4 and Allen Street are not the only people in the city of New Britain that have water issues. There are people in Ward 1 with water issues. There are people that I talked to that pay for flood insurance. Imagine that, people in New Britain have to pay for flood insurance. There are certain sections of the city, not just in Ward 4, that are battling water issues. And the great program called Flush, that somebody was referencing water money. It is a multimillion-dollar project and a painstakingly long, years, years' worth of work to replace our piping throughout the city of New Britain. And this council did spend money early on in the section down, going at the end of Newington Avenue, down towards where Daco Bus is, because that's the lowest point in the city. So, we're working our way backwards from the lowest point in the city where all the water flows. We are actively working over there, and we are actively working in certain other neighborhoods. So, to suggest that only Allen Street is facing a water problem, and this administration is ignoring it, is just not true. It's a false narrative. There are various pockets around the city of New Britain facing the same type of water issues, and we are working on it, but it is a very long and very expensive process. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alderwoman. First, anybody who hasn't spoken, it's now 7:38. Excuse me?
Well, yes, it has.
Again, Alderwoman Scott, with due respect, it's not, this public participation, as we've seen through in past meetings, is, we can discuss things in session.
Yep.
So, I think a back and forth.
It's not a back and forth. I just do need to say something. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I just, real quick, I have a point of inquiry.
Sure.
Is this point in the meeting to respond to the audience, or something that another other person said?
Only to the audience.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I just want to be clear about what I did say, that, that I never did say that someone should be shot. I clearly did not say that. No one should be shot for what they said. Freedom of speech, freedom of speech is definitely a thing that we should have. People have the right to say.
Alderwoman, that's the way it works.
Yep.
The, respond to the audience, but this is a back and forth. Do you understand?
No, this is not. I need to be clear with the audience right now, because something was said about me that now I need to be clear with the audience. So, however, I will not apologize for what I said. I think that people have the right to say whatever they feel like saying. They have the freedom of speech to say whatever they feel that they need to say. But I think that we all need to strive to have empathy. That was the message I was portraying, not that anyone should be harmed, and anyone shouldn't have the right to say what they want to say. You can say whatever you want, but we need to strive to say good, peaceful things to one another, always. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Having, seeing no other Alderman who wish to speak, I just want to close things by thanking Kristi DiKia. Sorry, I butchered the name. For your suggestion, and I think it can come up in the discussion tonight. This concludes public participation and responses. It's now 7:41. The regular meeting will begin shortly. I would like to call this regular meeting of the New Britain Common Council to order. The time is 8:06 PM. The date is September 24, 2025. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderperson McNamara.
Here.
Smedley.
Present.
Sanchez.
Here.
Belain Saavedra.
Here.
Simpson.
Present.
Russell.
Here.
Barbosa.
Here.
Hargraves.
Here.
McAdam.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Connors.
Here.
Melonowski.
Here.
Pabon.
Here.
Santiago.
Present.
15 present, Your Honor.
Thank you. Can we all please rise for the invocation? It will be followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. O God, our heavenly Father, we pay homage and remembrance to our Italian, Polish, and Puerto Rican communities who had a burning desire to make America their home and whose month we will recognize and celebrate their contributions in October. We ask this in thy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we sit this evening, I would just like to ask everyone for a moment of silence. Just this past week, we lost a former member of our city council, Lou Salvio. Lou served many years in this city in multiple capacities. He was a teacher in our higher education and in our area school districts. He served this city very well for a very long time. I'd just like to ask that you gather your remember Lou in our prayers this evening. And I'd like to send our deepest condolences to his family, who still all live in town. Thank you. Alderman Santiago, any minutes this evening?
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to accept the meetings, meeting meetings of the regular meeting of August 28, 2025, and a special meeting of September 10, 2025.
I have a second from Alderwoman Sanchez. Are there any questions or comments on the approval of the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have any amendments to the agenda?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. Petitions this evening?
Yes, Your Honor, we have five. Petition number one, from Alderperson McNamara, for the New Britain Police Department Traffic Division to conduct a traffic study in speed enforcement on Barbara Road.
Police Commission, please.
Number two, from Alderman McNamara, for the Department of Public Works to install a stop sign at the corner of Dorman Road and Miriam Road.
Mayor.
Public Works Commission?
Police Commission.
Because they have to approve it first.
There's no sign there.
Police Commission first.
Okay. Number three, from Alderman McNamara, for the New Britain Police Department and/or other departments to conduct an overall traffic analysis of the Lewis Road and Miriam Road area.
Police Commission, please.
Number four was withdrawn. Number five, from Alderman McNamara, requesting the police department conduct the traffic study during school opening and closing hours at the intersection of Corbin Avenue and Steel Street.
Police Commission. It's a nightmare.
And number six, from Alderwoman Scott, for the appropriate departments to address litter and debris concerning the following streets: Waller Street, Court Street, Wallen Street, Oak Street, West Street, North Street, Allen Street, South Street, Main Street, West Main Street.
Sounds like a community cleanup is needed, but we'll send that to the Public Works Department.
That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. And to our consent agenda, Alderman Santiago. I have a second from Alderwoman Sanchez. Any questions or comments? A, B, C, and D. Mr. Clerk?
Alderperson McNamara.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Belain Saavedra.
Yes.
Simpson.
Present.
Russell.
Here.
Barbosa.
Here.
Hargraves.
Here.
McAdam.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Connors.
Here.
Melonowski.
Here.
Pabon.
Here.
Santiago.
Present.
15 present, Your Honor.
Thank you. Can we all please rise for the invocation? It will be followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. O God, our heavenly Father, we pay homage and remembrance to our Italian, Polish, and Puerto Rican communities who had a burning desire to make America their home and whose month we will recognize and celebrate their contributions in October. We ask this in thy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we sit this evening, I would just like to ask everyone for a moment of silence. Just this past week, we lost a former member of our city council, Lou Salvio. Lou served many years in this city in multiple capacities. He was a teacher in our higher education and in our area school districts. He served this city very well for a very long time. I'd just like to ask that you gather your remember Lou in our prayers this evening. And I'd like to send our deepest condolences to his family, who still all live in town. Thank you. Alderman Santiago, any minutes this evening?
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to accept the meetings, meeting meetings of the regular meeting of August 28, 2025, and a special meeting of September 10, 2025.
I have a second from Alderwoman Sanchez. Are there any questions or comments on the approval of the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have any amendments to the agenda?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. Petitions this evening?
Yes, Your Honor, we have five. Petition number one, from Alderperson McNamara, for the New Britain Police Department Traffic Division to conduct a traffic study in speed enforcement on Barbara Road.
Police Commission, please.
Number two, from Alderman McNamara, for the Department of Public Works to install a stop sign at the corner of Dorman Road and Miriam Road.
Mayor.
Public Works Commission?
Police Commission.
Because they have to approve it first.
There's no sign there.
Police Commission first.
Okay. Number three, from Alderman McNamara, for the New Britain Police Department and/or other departments to conduct an overall traffic analysis of the Lewis Road and Miriam Road area.
Police Commission, please.
Number four was withdrawn. Number five, from Alderman McNamara, requesting the police department conduct the traffic study during school opening and closing hours at the intersection of Corbin Avenue and Steel Street.
Police Commission. It's a nightmare.
And number six, from Alderwoman Scott, for the appropriate departments to address litter and debris concerning the following streets: Waller Street, Court Street, Wallen Street, Oak Street, West Street, North Street, Allen Street, South Street, Main Street, West Main Street.
Sounds like a community cleanup is needed, but we'll send that to the Public Works Department.
That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. And to our consent agenda, Alderman Santiago.
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to accept the meetings, meeting meetings of the regular meeting of August 28, 2025, and a special meeting of September 10, 2025.
I have a second from Alderwoman Sanchez. Are there any questions or comments on the approval of the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have any amendments to the agenda?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. Petitions this evening?
Yes, Your Honor, we have five. Petition number one, from Alderperson McNamara, for the New Britain Police Department Traffic Division to conduct a traffic study in speed enforcement on Barbara Road.
Police Commission, please.
Number two, from Alderman McNamara, for the Department of Public Works to install a stop sign at the corner of Dorman Road and Miriam Road.
Mayor.
Public Works Commission?
Police Commission.
Because they have to approve it first.
There's no sign there.
Police Commission first.
Okay. Number three, from Alderman McNamara, for the New Britain Police Department and/or other departments to conduct an overall traffic analysis of the Lewis Road and Miriam Road area.
Police Commission, please.
Number four was withdrawn. Number five, from Alderman McNamara, requesting the police department conduct the traffic study during school opening and closing hours at the intersection of Corbin Avenue and Steel Street.
Police Commission. It's a nightmare.
And number six, from Alderwoman Scott, for the appropriate departments to address litter and debris concerning the following streets: Waller Street, Court Street, Wallen Street, Oak Street, West Street, North Street, Allen Street, South Street, Main Street, West Main Street.
Sounds like a community cleanup is needed, but we'll send that to the Public Works Department.
That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. And to our consent agenda, Alderman Santiago.
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to accept a concept agenda of A, B, C, and D.
I have a second from Alderwoman Sanchez. Any questions or comments? A, B, C, and D. Mr. Clerk?
Alderperson McNamara.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Belain Saavedra.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Hargraves.
Yes.
McAdam.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Connors.
Here.
Melonowski.
Here.
Pabon.
Here.
Santiago.
Present.
15 present, Your Honor.
Thank you. Can we all please rise for the invocation? It will be followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. O God, our heavenly Father, we pay homage and remembrance to our Italian, Polish, and Puerto Rican communities who had a burning desire to make America their home and whose month we will recognize and celebrate their contributions in October. We ask this in thy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we sit this evening, I would just like to ask everyone for a moment of silence. Just this past week, we lost a former member of our city council, Lou Salvio. Lou served many years in this city in multiple capacities. He was a teacher in our higher education and in our area school districts. He served this city very well for a very long time. I'd just like to ask that you gather your remember Lou in our prayers this evening. And I'd like to send our deepest condolences to his family, who still all live in town. Thank you. Alderman Santiago, any minutes this evening?
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to accept the meetings, meeting meetings of the regular meeting of August 28, 2025, and a special meeting of September 10, 2025.
I have a second from Alderwoman Sanchez. Are there any questions or comments on the approval of the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have any amendments to the agenda?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. Petitions this evening?
Yes, Your Honor, we have five. Petition number one, from Alderperson McNamara, for the New Britain Police Department Traffic Division to conduct a traffic study in speed enforcement on Barbara Road.
Police Commission, please.
Number two, from Alderman McNamara, for the Department of Public Works to install a stop sign at the corner of Dorman Road and Miriam Road.
Mayor.
Public Works Commission?
Police Commission.
Because they have to approve it first.
There's no sign there.
Police Commission first.
Okay. Number three, from Alderman McNamara, for the New Britain Police Department and/or other departments to conduct an overall traffic analysis of the Lewis Road and Miriam Road area.
Police Commission, please.
Number four was withdrawn. Number five, from Alderman McNamara, requesting the police department conduct the traffic study during school opening and closing hours at the intersection of Corbin Avenue and Steel Street.
Police Commission. It's a nightmare.
And number six, from Alderwoman Scott, for the appropriate departments to address litter and debris concerning the following streets: Waller Street, Court Street, Wallen Street, Oak Street, West Street, North Street, Allen Street, South Street, Main Street, West Main Street.
Sounds like a community cleanup is needed, but we'll send that to the Public Works Department.
That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. And to our consent agenda, Alderman Santiago.
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to accept a concept agenda of A, B, C, and D.
I have a second from Alderwoman Sanchez. Any questions or comments? A, B, C, and D. Mr. Clerk?
Alderperson McNamara.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Belain Saavedra.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Hargraves.
Yes.
McAdam.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Connors.
Here.
Melonowski.
Here.
Pabon.
Here.
Santiago.
Present.
15 present, Your Honor.
Thank you. Can we all please rise for the invocation? It will be followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. O God, our heavenly Father, we pay homage and remembrance to our Italian, Polish, and Puerto Rican communities who had a burning desire to make America their home and whose month we will recognize and celebrate their contributions in October. We ask this in thy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we sit this evening, I would just like to ask everyone for a moment of silence. Just this past week, we lost a former member of our city council, Lou Salvio. Lou served many years in this city in multiple capacities. He was a teacher in our higher education and in our area school districts. He served this city very well for a very long time. I'd just like to ask that you gather your remember Lou in our prayers this evening. And I'd like to send our deepest condolences to his family, who still all live in town. Thank you. Alderman Santiago, any minutes this evening?
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to accept the meetings, meeting meetings of the regular meeting of August 28, 2025, and a special meeting of September 10, 2025.
I have a second from Alderwoman Sanchez. Are there any questions or comments on the approval of the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have any amendments to the agenda?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. Petitions this evening?
Yes, Your Honor, we have five. Petition number one, from Alderperson McNamara, for the New Britain Police Department Traffic Division to conduct a traffic study in speed enforcement on Barbara Road.
Police Commission, please.
Number two, from Alderman McNamara, for the Department of Public Works to install a stop sign at the corner of Dorman Road and Miriam Road.
Mayor.
Public Works Commission?
Police Commission.
Because they have to approve it first.
There's no sign there.
Police Commission first.
Okay. Number three, from Alderman McNamara, for the New Britain Police Department and/or other departments to conduct an overall traffic analysis of the Lewis Road and Miriam Road area.
Police Commission, please.
Number four was withdrawn. Number five, from Alderman McNamara, requesting the police department conduct the traffic study during school opening and closing hours at the intersection of Corbin Avenue and Steel Street.
Police Commission. It's a nightmare.
And number six, from Alderwoman Scott, for the appropriate departments to address litter and debris concerning the following streets: Waller Street, Court Street, Wallen Street, Oak Street, West Street, North Street, Allen Street, South Street, Main Street, West Main Street.
Sounds like a community cleanup is needed, but we'll send that to the Public Works Department.
That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. And to our consent agenda, Alderman Santiago.
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to accept a concept agenda of A, B, C, and D.
I have a second from Alderwoman Sanchez. Any questions or comments? A, B, C, and D. Mr. Clerk?
Alderperson McNamara.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Belain Saavedra.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Hargraves.
Yes.
McAdam.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Connors.
Here.
Melonowski.
Here.
Pabon.
Here.
Santiago.
Present.
15 present, Your Honor.
Thank you. Can we all please rise for the invocation? It will be followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. O God, our heavenly Father, we pay homage and remembrance to our Italian, Polish, and Puerto Rican communities who had a burning desire to make America their home and whose month we will recognize and celebrate their contributions in October. We ask this in thy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we sit this evening, I would just like to ask everyone for a moment of silence. Just this past week, we lost a former member of our city council, Lou Salvio. Lou served many years in this city in multiple capacities. He was a teacher in our higher education and in our area school districts. He served this city very well for a very long time. I'd just like to ask that you gather your remember Lou in our prayers this evening. And I'd like to send our deepest condolences to his family, who still all live in town. Thank you. Alderman Santiago, any minutes this evening?
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to accept the meetings, meeting meetings of the regular meeting of August 28, 2025, and a special meeting of September 10, 2025.
I have a second from Alderwoman Sanchez. Are there any questions or comments on the approval of the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have any amendments to the agenda?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. Petitions this evening?
Yes, Your Honor, we have five. Petition number one, from Alderperson McNamara, for the New Britain Police Department Traffic Division to conduct a traffic study in speed enforcement on Barbara Road.
Police Commission, please.
Number two, from Alderman McNamara, for the Department of Public Works to install a stop sign at the corner of Dorman Road and Miriam Road.
Mayor.
Public Works Commission?
Police Commission.
Because they have to approve it first.
There's no sign there.
Police Commission first.
Okay. Number three, from Alderman McNamara, for the New Britain Police Department and/or other departments to conduct an overall traffic analysis of the Lewis Road and Miriam Road area.
Police Commission, please.
Number four was withdrawn. Number five, from Alderman McNamara, requesting the police department conduct the traffic study during school opening and closing hours at the intersection of Corbin Avenue and Steel Street.
Police Commission. It's a nightmare.
And number six, from Alderwoman Scott, for the appropriate departments to address litter and debris concerning the following streets: Waller Street, Court Street, Wallen Street, Oak Street, West Street, North Street, Allen Street, South Street, Main Street, West Main Street.
Sounds like a community cleanup is needed, but we'll send that to the Public Works Department.
That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. And to our consent agenda, Alderman Santiago.
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to accept a concept agenda of A, B, C, and D.
I have a second from Alderwoman Sanchez. Any questions or comments? A, B, C, and D. Mr. Clerk?
Alderperson McNamara.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Belain Saavedra.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Hargraves.
Yes.
McAdam.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Connors.
Here.
Melonowski.
Here.
Pabon.
Here.
Santiago.
Present.
15 present, Your Honor.
Thank you. Can we all please rise for the invocation? It will be followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. O God, our heavenly Father, we pay homage and remembrance to our Italian, Polish, and Puerto Rican communities who had a burning desire to make America their home and whose month we will recognize and celebrate their contributions in October. We ask this in thy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we sit this evening, I would just like to ask everyone for a moment of silence. Just this past week, we lost a former member of our city council, Lou Salvio. Lou served many years in this city in multiple capacities. He was a teacher in our higher education and in our area school districts. He served this city very well for a very long time. I'd just like to ask that you gather your remember Lou in our prayers this evening. And I'd like to send our deepest condolences to his family, who still all live in town. Thank you. Alderman Santiago, any minutes this evening?
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to accept the meetings, meeting meetings of the regular meeting of August 28, 2025, and a special meeting of September 10, 2025.
I have a second from Alderwoman Sanchez. Are there any questions or comments on the approval of the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have any amendments to the agenda?
No, Your Honor.
Okay.[1294.22]
Good evening, everyone.
I would like to call this regular meeting of the New Britain Common Council to order. The time is 8:06 PM, the date, September 24th, 2025. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alder Person McNamara.
Here.
Smedley.
Present.
Sanchez.
Here.
Belain Sevedra.
Here.
Simpson.
Present.
Russell.
Here.
Barbosa.
Here.
Hargraves.
Here.
McAdam.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Connors.
Here.
Malinowski.
Here.
Pabon.
Here.
Santiago.
Present.
Fifteen present, your honor.
Thank you. Can we all please rise for the invocation? It will be followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. O God, our heavenly father, we pay homage and remembrance to our Italian, Polish, and Puerto Rican communities, who had a burning desire to make America their home and whose month we will recognize and celebrate their contributions in October. We ask this in thy name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we sit this evening, I would just like to ask everyone for a moment of silence. Just this past week, we lost a former member of our city council, Lou Salvio. Lou served many years in this city in multiple capacities. He was a teacher in our higher education, in our area school districts. But he served this city very well for a very long time. I'd just like to ask that you gather, you remember Lou in our prayers this evening. And I'd like to send our deepest condolences to his family, who still all live in town. Thank you. Alderman Santiago, any minutes this evening?
Thank you, your honor. Make a motion to accept the meetings, meeting meetings of the regular meeting of August 28th, 2025, and a special meeting of September 10th, 2025.
I have a second from Alderwoman Sanchez. Are there any questions or comments on the approval of the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Do I have any amendments to the agenda?
No, your honor.
Okay. Petitions this evening?
Yes, your honor, we have five. Petition number one, from Alderperson McNamara, for the New Britain Police Department Traffic Division to conduct a traffic study in speed enforcement on Barbara Road.
Police commission, please.
Okay, number two, from Alderman McNamara, for the Department of Public Works to install a stop sign at the corner of Dormin Road and Miriam Road.
Mayor.
Public Works Commission?
Police Commission.
Because they have to approve it first.
There's no sign there.
Police Commission first.
Okay. Number three, from Alderman McNamara, for the New Britain Police Department and our other departments to conduct an overall traffic analysis of the Lewis Road and Miriam Road area.
Police Commission, please.
Okay, number four was withdrawn. Number five, from Alderman McNamara, requesting the police department conduct the traffic study during school opening and closing hours at the intersection of Corbin Avenue and Steel Street.
Police Commission. It's a nightmare.
And number six, from Alderwoman Scott, for the appropriate departments to address litter and debris concerning the following streets. Waller Street, Court Street, Wallen Street, Oak Street, West Street, North Street, Allen Street, South Street, Main Street, West Main Street.
Sounds like a community cleanup is needed, but we'll send that to the Public Works Department.
That's it, your honor.
Thank you. And to our consent agenda, Alderman Santiago.
Thank you, your honor. I make a motion to accept a concept agenda of A, B, C, and D.
I have a second from Alderwoman Sanchez. Any questions or comments, A, B, C, and D? Mr. Clerk?
Alderperson McNamara.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Belain Sevedra.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Hargraves.
McAdam.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Connors.
Yes.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pabon.
Yes.
Santiago.
Yes.
Fifteen zero.
Motion carries. Alderman McNamara.
Hey, your honor. I make a motion to accept and adopt number one.
Second.
Second by Alderman Connors.
This is the RMS and Heritage Housing, construction of a 64-unit residential, low to moderate income, at Phase Two, near Columbus Commons. The resolution authorizes the mayor to negotiate and execute on behalf of the city a tax modification agreement that is stated as 18 years in the appropriate zone. And obviously, the community benefit is affordable housing as part of this project. So I move adoption.
Thank you, Alderman. Any questions or comments on item number one? Alderwoman Scott.
I just want to say, this is a wonderful plan of bringing more housing into our city, and we need housing. However, I just want to be clear, like that there still are concerns with lower-income people being able to, like people who are seniors, or senior population, people who are fixed income. Domestic violence survivors could fall under this, and people who are disabled, who are collecting Social Security, still may not qualify for these apartments. So I just want to make sure that we're being clear that this is an ongoing issue that we have still, and that we need to still work towards those concerns for our constituents that are still looking for housing under those income brackets. So, but I'm very excited that we're going to have some more low-income or affordable housing units available. Thank you.
Any other alderperson wish to comment on this item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item two, Alderman Simpson.
Thank you, your honor. I rise to make a motion to accept and adopt item number two.
Second.
Second from Alderman Connors.
Thank you. This is essentially started in the process where the city can receive an easement to replace a traffic light. So it's just going to help with maintenance of our roads and traffic infrastructure. I urge adoption.
Any questions or comments on item two? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Alderman Sanchez, Alderwoman Sanchez, item number three. Sorry, I was having a flashback.
I make a motion to accept and adopt item number three.
Second.
Second from Alderman Smedley.
This resolution is for the purchase of and sale agreement with RMS Companies and Heritage Housing Incorporated for 125 Columbus Boulevard. And it is as follow. Whereas the City of New Britain is committed to the addition of new units to the housing stock in the city and the revitalization of the downtown area. Whereas the city reviewed the proposal and interviewed the development teams to determine the best fit for the city. And RMS Companies and Heritage Housing Incorporated has proposed construction of 64 units. And the City of New Britain and RMS Companies Heritage Housing have agreed to a sell price of $500,000. And whereas the City of New Britain and RMS are going to be executing an agreement for this purchase, and I urge adoption.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Any questions or comments on item number three? I know it was discussed in a committee. So go around. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Alderwoman Barbosa.
Thank you, your honor. This is, I make a motion to accept and adopt item number four.
Second by Alderwoman Sanchez.
This is regarding the purchase of a TSI port account, port account Pro 8048T respirator fit testing machine for the New Britain Fire Department. It's a trade-in of $4,000 with a final purchase price of $12,235, and I urge adoption.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Alderwoman Barbosa, item five.
Thank you, your honor. I make a motion to accept and adopt item number five.
Second.
Second by Alderman Russell.
This is regarding the purchase of Unimac washer extractor for the fire station number two for the New Britain Fire Department for a cost of $13,904, and I urge adoption.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Alderwoman Scott.
Thank you, your honor. I make a motion to accept item number six and refer to committee.
Second.
Second from Alderman Santiago.
This is to create a uniform term of office for department heads, and I urge adoption, I mean urge referral to administration, finance, and law, and public services.
Any questions or comments on this referral? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Alderwoman Barbosa, item seven.
Thank you, your honor. I make a motion to accept and adopt item number seven.
Second.
Second by Alderman Santiago.
This is regarding the Every Kid Counts After-School Program at Lincoln Elementary School. Would like to read the resolution to record. This program, the program objective, the Recreation and Community Services Department will provide comprehensive after-school programming at Lincoln Elementary School for students in grades three through five and are targeted to attend the after-school program from 3:35 to 5:45 PM. The major components of the after-school program are academic support, enrichment, recreation, and wellness, and family engagement. The total expenditure for this program is $19,400, and I urge adoption.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on item number seven? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item number eight, Alderman Malinowski.
Thank you, your honor. I make a motion to accept and adopt item eight.
Second from Alderman Gibson.
And this is the appointment of Justin Dorsey to the head of the Director of Planning and Development. And Mr. Dorsey has a wealth of knowledge and experience, and he brings a love to the city of New Britain, and will work diligently to do great things in this position. His determination will be a great asset to the city and the entire department, and I urge adoption.
Thank you. Alderman Malinowski, open the floor. Any other questions or comments? Alderman Smedley.
Thank you, mayor. I'm sorry, I thought I was presenting that one. I also rise in support of Mr. Dorsey. I just want to talk about some of the abilities that he has that I've seen. And the number one thing is his ability to make relationships and to talk to people on any level. Mr. Dorsey, I've watched over the last 12 years work in your office. Is partners with every department in City Hall. Is partners with the businesses out on Main Street, West Main Street, up and down, across our bridge in Little Poland. Mr. Dorsey continues to make friends throughout the city that have impactful relationships to business for our city. So I just want to comment that Justin brings a world of knowledge, not only because he bleeds red and gold, but because he actually is boots-on-the-ground and makes relationships with people, which is one of the most important things that you can do in this city and for business for our city. So I urge adoption. Thank you, your honor.
Any other alderperson like to comment on item number eight? Alderwoman Barbosa.
You know, it's a good thing to build relationships within the city of New Britain, but this position is not about all, just about building relationships. It's about having technical knowledge and wisdom, and being able to read plans and understand them, and know how to share them. One of the things that I want to talk about is, on the job description, it states the minimum requirement. Graduation from an accredited four-year college with major emphasis on public administration, economic development, planning or business administration, plus six years of responsible professional experience in public administration, economic development, planning or business administration, or any field related, two years of which must have been a managerial or administrative level or equivalent combination of education and experience and training. He may possess those, but he also lacks, or may lack, the knowledge of technical expertise.
Madam Mayor, point of privilege, I apologize. Is it appropriate to discuss qualifications open on the floor through you to Corporation Council? Or should we go into an executive session to do such?
If we're going to talk about specific qualifications of the candidates, that should be an executive session.
I'm not talking about specific qualifications. I'm reading what the job description entailed.
Okay. Through you to my colleague, she just stated that he lacks, so she is specifically referring to.
We'll just keep it general, and please don't make it about individual person.
Then I close my questions.
Any other comments or questions? Alderman Simpson.
If it's all right with you, could I ask Justin Dorsey just like practical knowledge questions? This isn't tied to the interview process or anything. I know some people have concerns about relationships, but like, at the end of the day, we're considering you for a job. So I just want to see, as somebody who does hold an education in the field you're applying to, I just want to be able to rest assured, knowing that if this council does hire you, like, can you do the job? And so, and so I just, I come, don't get me wrong. Everything I'm about to ask are things that have been mentioned in these chambers, either with our Plan of Conservation Development, through the different presentations that Jack Benjamin would give us, things like that. And so I just, I'm trying to get a feel of your practical knowledge for this job, not even the relationships. It's not even a question of your loyalty to this city, from one New Britain kid to another. I think, I think you and I could talk for hours about the history of this city. Sure. And the amount of work, and how hard it is to love this city. But through you, your honor, may I just ask some practical knowledge questions? Thank you. So, can you just describe for me the layout of what a protected bike lane looks like?
I'm sorry, a protected bike lane?
Yeah.
In terms, in what regards?
Related to transit-oriented development.
So, I wouldn't be honest with you to tell you that I'm absolutely verbose in all that. But I know the skills necessary and the folks to talk to in that department. So that department's got eight employees. Most importantly, in terms of what you're dealing with, is Jeff Cormier. Jeff Cormier knows it inside and out.
Cool. Thank you. Can you explain to me the difference between permeable and impermeable surfaces?
Sure. Permeable means that water can go through it, and impermeable is the opposite.
I'll take it. This one might be getting a little into theory, but in terms of transit-oriented development, there's eight generally accepted purposes, values, themes, really. Can you name me two, and it doesn't have to be a specific wording? It can just be, what does TOD really try to gear towards? So of the eight, just any.
I don't believe in the moment, sir, oh, excuse me, Alderman, in the right frame of mind to give you the answer that you deserve.
Gotcha. Thank you. So during your time here, what's really changed in that office?
So the office used to be two totally different, separate departments. So it used to be Economic Development, which was one person, Bill Carroll. And then it was Municipal Development when Ken Malinowski was running the department. Initially, city plan was moved more towards Economic Development. So Steve Schiller at the time, and Gladys Rosario, who was here at the time, they went and they worked with Bill Carroll, because the thought behind that was folks coming in, looking for businesses. A lot of them have to end up going through the city plan commission. So the goal is to make it, you know, one-stop shopping. So you're going to the Economic Development, that's giving you the economic toolkits, the different enterprise zones that are available, and what other type of benefits are, excuse me, available to the residents. And then they could talk about the variance that would be necessary for the different type of zones that they have to go into, and that kind of stuff. So Municipal Development, at that point, just focused on grants in that aspect. Then, when Kenny passed away, we realized that there are a lot of businesses that are coming in that are looking for small grants, or CDBG funding and that kind of stuff. So it was then combined into, instead of two separate department heads, you know, it went to one department. Kenny passed away, I was interim director until the departments were combined, and Bill Carroll became interim director, and that was, you know, like January of '21. And then finally, Jack Benjamin retired, I believe it was June of '21, full-time as permanent director. So that's the biggest change, is taking the two departments and then splitting, or combining them into one, to make it, you know, easier for the businesses to get what they need.
Gotcha. And what's your understanding of planning and, the Planning and Development Department throughout the CDBG process? Like, what's the main role they play there?
So the, that's where the development comes into, right? So the grant process was Scott Williams, Scott's superstar when it comes to that. He makes sure that every dollar is accounted for, that it's being spent the right way, that the programs that apply qualify for, you know, the monies that they are. Make sure that we stay within our 15% allocation, that had requires for public service. You know, and then after that, after you guys approve, it's about getting all the contracts, and make sure that they're sticking to, through the contracts, they're going through the proper bid processes, making sure that everything's Davis Bacon, that they're getting three bids, because it's all federal money being used.
Thank you. And where do you think US cities are headed with in terms of parking minimums in general? I know every city has their theme, every city has their goals.
Yeah, so you're seeing more and more that they're making it less, especially here in town, where we're getting, you know, more apartment buildings that are coming in. We're go, we went from, I believe it was one, down to .75. So I think you're going to see that in large urban areas as we go along.
Cool. And now, just picking one out of the hat, what year does our Vision Zero test force specify for the city to reach its goal?
I was not a part of the Vision Zero process, but I'm sure Alderwoman Belain Sevedra, or Brock Weber, who represented our office, or Nate Viera, they'd be able to give you that answer.
Gotcha. 2045. We got a little time, I think we'll get there.
Sounds right.
I think those are all the questions I've had. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Connors.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dorsey, for your interest in taking up this position. I just wanted to ask you two questions. Just can you state generally your experience and training over the past 12 years, and how they fulfill the experiential requirements of this position? And secondly, one project in particular that you have, you know, deep knowledge on, that would be beneficial going forward for the city?
So for the training and experience, I believe, you know, been said before, I've been here for 12 years, here every step of the way. I said in the panel interview with Alderwoman Sevedra and Alderman McNamara, the amount of city plan reports that I've read, you know, you figure they have six meetings a year. Now we've actually increased it a little bit, but when I first started, there were six meetings a year. And there's a report that goes for every single one of them. And sometimes that report stays the same, and then it changes when it gets to ZBA. You know, the Historic Preservation Commission, which is, also falls under the, this, the Planning and Development Department. Those require reports as well. You know, there's a lot of times that folks come in, they think that they should be getting one thing, and city plan comes back and they says, and, you know, it's a negative recommendation for the variance, or for the special exemption and all that stuff. So that was trying to play mediator between the city plan staff, the commission, and then the applicant, you know? Not everybody is going to be happy, but, you know, we did what we could. The CCND commission, especially in the beginning, I was at not just the commission meetings, but every single one of their subcommittee meetings when it came down to CDBG time. Yeah, I was there when we merged the departments together, you know? Everything that Mayor Stewart has done in the initiatives to bring, you know, New Britain to the revitalization of New Britain, you know? I've been fortunate enough to be there every step of the way. What was your second question? I'm sorry.
Second, the second question was about a specific project, like, for instance, Mount Pleasant, something like that.
Well, so the one, I gotta say, that I'm happiest that I saw completed was today, was the Aquinas. You know, that was a project 30 years in the making, you know, since the school closed. I mean, Father's here tonight, he ran a lot of fundraisers for St. Thomas Aquinas, but, yeah, it's been quite a while. And to finally see that complete, and see 11 families get their homes, that they're going to be there forever, is, you can't beat that, right? They all took a picture together. My hope is, you know, they all become friends, because they're all, they're all going to be moving in at the same time. Some with young kids, some hoping to start families. So I'm very pleased to see that, you know, complete. And Margaret Malinowski from the department, she did a fantastic job, you know, organizing all that. And Tony Bianca, as a construction inspector, making sure that Jay Rosa, the contractor, you know, stayed within the range that they were allotted. But you mentioned Mount Pleasant, I mean, that's the next big one, right? And it's currently ongoing, and there's so many moving pieces with that, because there's so many different pots of funding. There's funding from the state of Connecticut, there's funding from the city of New Britain that we provided. There's funding through CIF program, which we actually write their grant applications for them. Scott Williams does, to ensure that they get any little bit that they can. You know, we're hoping, you know, knock on wood, that there's going to be a shovel in the ground for that project, you know, in the beginning of the spring. Because they're just looking for that final $7 million to be able to start Phase One. And for buildings that were built during World War II, I mean, being able to give the folks that live there brand-new, safe, you know, clean places to live, I mean, that's life-changing for them. So that's the next project, obviously, that gets put to the forefront and is, you know, top priority.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. I appreciate your interest in serving the city, and I know personally, your main priority is the city of New Britain. So once again, I appreciate your interest in the position.
Alderwoman Sevedra.
Thank you, your honor. No questions. I just want to say to Mr. Dorsey, not every person who's appointed to a department head has to go under a public interview with the council, so I appreciate you indulging the council members in specific job skill questions that most job, most department heads don't have to undergo when they stand before us on the evening of their appointment. I also want to say.
I don't mean to cut you off, Alderwoman. I would just like to say that I'm not every person. I have no problem being asked whatever question is asked of me.
Perfect.
I would hope that any resident that comes into that department, if I'm so lucky enough that you folks bless the mayor's approval tonight, that I would be able to answer, or find the answer for them within a reasonable period of time, any one of those questions.
Very good. I appreciate that.
So the questions themselves, I, you know, I take no offense to them whatsoever. The questions themselves, I, you know, I take no offense to them whatsoever.
And not that I believe any of my colleagues meant any offense by that, I'm just saying that sometimes it's unnerving to stand in front of this body and especially being interviewed. But what I wanted to say, more importantly, was during the interview process, you spoke passionately about Mount Pleasant, so it's interesting that Alderman Connors brought that up and that you talked about that, that that was one of the highlights of your experience in the mayor's office, and you were very passionate about housing and that specific project. So I know that we could look forward to whomever's sitting in the mayor's office to be able to continue their work with your office and work on the issues of housing, such as some of the issues that Alderwoman Scott brought up earlier in terms of low-income housing. The footprint of Mount Pleasant is growing significantly with this project, so not only are people not being displaced, but we're creating new opportunities for people that are of low income. So thank you for answering all the questions presented to you.
Any other older person wish to speak? Alderman Hargraves?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I know a big part of this position is having relationships with the business community. Can you just elaborate some of the relations that you currently have and how that will benefit you if you're put into this position?
Which businesses? I mean, I could start, I could, I could name a list of them, I could go through my cellphone here and give you the personal contacts that I have for, you know, all those folks. And actually, it's funny, you know, you mentioned that, because last council meeting, there was a petition that was put in by Councilwoman Scott about growing that base, and Alderman McNamara can attest to this, I actually brought that up in my interview, how that we should be welcoming of that and we should be including more and more business lists of whomever. So the business community, for lack of a better term, you want to appease them, right? Because they stay here, and a lot of times they're paying more taxes than the residents. So they help offset the costs to the residents. So the businesses are happy. And one of the questions that was asked during the interview was economic retention versus economic recruitment. And I said that those terms are interdependent, because you need recruitment for retention, because if you have, if businesses see that more businesses are prolonged than they're staying here, they're going to be adept to coming, you know, so the, one hand washes the other in that aspect.
Thank you.
Any other, Alderwoman Scott?
Thanks for coming in, and thanks for your interest. I, I looked at the resumes, and I saw that the, one of the candidates had a lot of qualifications, a lot of schooling, and a lot of work history with this position, and appeared to be the better candidate. I'm not trying to, you know, and I did also, I think that all of your answers have been great, and I think you're, you know, you've been here a long time and everything, since 2013, but I do have a question about your resume. It's, it seems like there's some inconsistencies on it.
Okay.
That you started here in 2013, but it says that you had the same position, but that's not true. I checked.
I don't believe it says that. I was deputy chief of staff for the first six years, and then in November of 2019, I became the chief of staff. And they're listed right one after another, I know, because I wrote it.
No, it doesn't say that on there.
It should.
It says other positions. It says that you were here.
Mayor, point of information. We're not supposed to discuss qualifications on the public floor. We can move into executive session if the Alderwoman would like to, but it's not appropriate to discuss specific qualifications on the floor.
Well, so the school, so, yeah, Command Corps Counsel?
Again, if we're talking about qualifications and the specific qualifications of the candidates, that's something that should be in executive session with the HR director, that can go through the qualifications with you. Or?
Okay. Well, I had some, well, when I was looking at the resumes, I did see some inconsistencies. And I would like to point out that this is a very important position, and because I see qualifications over other qualifications, I, this is exactly why I put the resolution in earlier to be sent to administration, finance, and law, because this is basically a permanent position, and this is not, this is something that we should really take seriously. And it's interesting that, again, as traffic from the last meeting when we appointed someone, that we're appointing people at the end of the mayoral term, and that we should really be hiring an intern at this time. And I, I just have concerns with this, when we, when I have concerns with the qualifications and everything, and... So, that's what this is based on. So I, which I'm not going to be able to be a yes due to the fact that I think every, sorry, every taxpayer here should be concerned when we're appointing people like this, because the taxpayers pay for this. So I just, I'm, I'm going to be a no to this.
Only 50%, the other 50% is federally funded.
But thank you so much.
Any other elder person? Okay, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? For the record, Alderman McNamara, Alderwoman Scott. Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you, Mayor, for the recommendation. Thank you, council folks, for your blessing. And folks that even voted no, I don't blame you. You did what's in your best, what you thought was in the best interest of the city. That's totally your prerogative, that's what you were elected to do. What I will tell you, though, is I am committed, I am committed to this city, and I treat everybody the same as I would want to be treated. So I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Alderman McNamara, no hard feelings, we've known each other a long time, our families have done a lot together, you know, my father was very supportive of the guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. But anyways, I'm looking to say how forward I am to beginning this. We got a great staff, I'm proud to say that the majority, all but, I think, one of the staff lives in New Britain, so it's hard-working, dedicated people that care about the city of New Britain, and we're only going to continue to go forward from there. So thank you all.
Item number nine, Alderwoman Scott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to accept and adopt item number nine.
Second by Alderman Santiago.
This is for the cracked ceiling and various streets, city streets and road. The New Britain Public Works will be getting funding to, to repair these things, and I urge adoption.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, Alderman Malinowski, item number 10.
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to accept and adopt item 10.
Second from Alderman Hargraves.
And this is for Stanley Loop Trail Neighborhood Connections Project, and this will help connect the Stanley Loop Trail to neighborhoods along Eddie Glover Boulevard. And it is in the amount of $466,000, $439.49, and I urge adoption.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, item 11 tonight, Alderman Santiago.
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to accept, I make a motion to accept and adopt item number 11.
I have a second from Alderman Smedley.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is, whoo, this is for, for the, I'm going to read the resolution as is first, and then we'll discuss after. To Your Honor, the mayor and the common council of the city of New Britain does not sign, undersigned, beg leave to recommend adoption of the following, whereas revenue, expenditure, encumbrance, and accrued activities for fiscal year 2025, 2024, 25, has concluded unaudit, whereas the city performed better than accepted, expected, leaving a positive result of budgetary operations, and whereas the city has multiple accounts, these results needs to be transferred in order to provide fundings for the below items to help the current fiscal year budget fix deficiencies, and whereas, one, I don't know why I can't even speak today, woo, busy day, sorry, excuse me. Whereas 1 million be transferred into the city's BOE non-operating account, and whereas 2, 2.7, 2,725,906.24, 24 cents, be assigned to the tax stabilization funds to be utilized for future tax mitigations, and whereas 470,000 be transferred to designated accounts for construction of pickleball courts, AAW Stanley, and whereas 101,65, I'm sorry, 101,651.40 be transferred to a designated account to complete the funding required for the city hall window projects, as you can see they're coming up really nicely, whereas 111,270.95 be transferred to a designated account to complete the fundings required for the machinery repairs projects in the, Bukowski, I'm sorry, I'm chopping that one up, parking garage, and whereas 400,063.22 be transferred to designated accounts to complete the renovations of fire station one and two, whereas 200,000 be transferred to designated accounts to complete the fundings required for the Myrtle Street street scape project, and whereas 200,000 be transferred to designated accounts for funding required for the designated works related to the Route 174 reconstruction project, and whereas 1 million be transferred to a designated account associated with the purchase of various capital improvements, I'm sorry, capital equipments, and whereas a line item budget transfer is proposed to adjust both revenue and expenditure budget per section, section 2.491 and 2.494 of the ordinance of the city of New Britain, and now therefore be resolved that the necessary line item transfer amendments where in the general funding for the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2025 be made by the financial department so that the budget figure matches the actuals. And Your Honor?
Yes.
Reading this, I would like to make amendment to this resolution. Would like to strike off whereas the 470,000 for the pickleballs and add, whereas 200, I mean, 370,000 be transferred to the parking rec for, sorry, let me get this correct wording. Just sorry, I didn't write it down, so. Thank you, park improvements. And then, of 50,000, whereas 50,000 will be transferred to a designated community service account for security deposit and homelessness prevention program, and 50,000 be transferred to a designated account for AD, accessibility, and sidewalks repairs. And I urge the refer, I mean, urge the amendment, thank you.
Thank you. So let's just call, let me just clarify really quick. So we have an amendment on the floor, which is to strike the whereas of 470,000 in the pickleball.
Yep.
And we are going to add three additional whereas, 370,000 to be in a designated account for park improvements, general park improvements.
Parking recs account of, for park improvements.
Okay. Park improvements, general count, okay. 50,000 for security deposits underneath.
Security and homeless prevention program.
Security and, okay.
And then 50,000 be transferred to the ADH accessible and sidewalk repairs.
Okay. And Public Works.
Yes.
And I have a second on this from Alderwoman Savajah. Are there any questions on the amendment? We all take a vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, amendment carries, and now we're discussing the item as amended once. Any discussion on the motion on the resolution now as amended?
Your Honor, I would give credit to one of our pub, one of our public speakers that came in, Kristy, I'm not going to say her last name, she gave some great ideas, and this is what we're supposed to be doing, listen to our community. We, you know, discussed it, had some, you know, back and forth, finally came up with this, this number, and I think that it fits the city. Another thing is that, just we look forward to having that public forum on deciding on what we would like to do with the money if that's the case. Thank you. And I urge adoption.
Alderman Smedley?
Thank you, Your Honor. Our caucus also rises in support of this amendment and voting unanimously to approve this resolution. We look forward to discussing what the possibilities could be for that money. We heard what the public said as well, and sometimes it's okay to just take a pause and say, let's rethink this, and that's what we're doing here with this portion of the money. So I appreciate all the support from the other side and the support from our caucus as well. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Alderwoman Scott?
I just hope that we're prioritizing the money appropriately for everybody in the community, our housing, improving housing, making sure that we're making our neighborhoods safer with the ADA sidewalks and, and education, and, and I know, and housing, like, it's just so important that we're in a housing crisis here in this country, and so I just, I'm, I'm in support of anything that's going to help everybody in the community, so I hope we're prioritizing appropriately and everyone, the community will like this plan. Thanks.
Any other elder person wish to speak on the item as amended once? Alderman Simpson?
Sorry, just to clarify, could you restate the language we added to it?
$370,000, okay, so you're removing the 470, you're adding 370 to the general fund account for park recreation department, park improvements, general park improvements, 50,000 for security deposits for the homeless prevention program through the community services office, and 50,000 to go to ADA compliance, sidewalk compliance in the Public Works Department.
Thank you.
Any other elder person wish to comment? I just want to give a shout-out to Hyder, who's here. He's our acting budget and capital projects fiscal analyst, is that the proper title? I don't know. He's our budget guy now, well, at least in the interim, but thanks for all your help on this, Hyder, I really appreciate it. This is a roll call. If no one has any other questions, Mr. Clerk, because it is a budget amendment. So we're voting on the resolution as amended once. And Hyder will figure out the account details after.
Elder Person McNamara?
Aye.
Smedley? Sanchez?
Yes.
Blount Savajah?
Yes.
Simpson? Russell?
Yes.
Barbosa? Hargraves? McAdam? Gibson? Scott?
Yes.
Connors?
Yes.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pabon? Santiago?
Yes.
15-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Motion carries, made by Alderman Santiago, seconded by Alderman Gibson. All those in favor, please say aye. Where it ends, the time is 8:48 PM. Thank you, everyone, have a great night.